Ladies and gentlemen, good evening. We appreciate all of you being here with us tonight. I'd like to call this meeting to order. If you will stand, the Vice Mayor will offer our invocation, ladies and our pledge of allegiance.
Let's pray, please. Our heavenly Father, we come to you tonight seeking your guidance, your wisdom. We ask that you be with this council in all of its deliberation. We ask that you be with this city, bless each one of its citizens. Heavenly Father, we ask that you give the wisdom to our national leaders and our state leaders to lead this country forward and to help us out of this time of strife. We ask that you be with those who serve in foreign lands and bring them home safely. We ask all of this in your precious name. Amen.
Our pleasure, allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, sir, thank you. Very much. First item on our agenda is, as always, is our audience for visitors, and it is at this time. If there's any one in the audience who would like to address council on any issue, we'd like to hear from you now. Yeah, if you're here for the public hearing, when we announce the public hearing, you can speak then. Anything else besides that? Anybody? Any comments? Okay, let's move on then to our approval of our minutes, and we only have one session.
May I make a motion? We approve the minutes of our regular session dated April 13, 2009.
Okay.
As amended?
As amended.
As amended, yeah.
Okay, we have a motion made in second that we adopt our regular session minutes from April the 13th, 2009. Any other concerns, comments? Any questions? If not, take the floor.
Councilman Holloway.
Aye.
Councilman Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Marie.
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
Councilman Krieger.
Aye.
Councilman Hunt.
Aye.
Mayor Housler.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by vote is seven to zero.
Okay, thanks for that. Move on to item E. It is one of two public hearings. It has to do with proposed real property tax increase. Ms. Wiggins?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, a public hearing has been scheduled this evening on the property assessments and the proposed tax rates. The assessor is available to answer any questions you may have. No action other than conducting the public hearing is required.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Any comments about council before we open the public hearing? Anybody? Okay, we will then open the public hearing and ask if there is anybody in the audience that would like to address the proposed real property tax increase. Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening.
Members of City Council, my name is Tom Powers. I live at 311 Huntsknecht Road. I called the police department, and I won one line one time in my, in 14 years that I've been here. An officer was at my house within a minute with his EMS bag. The ambulance was there within three minutes. That's what my taxes go for. The school system is one of the best ones in the area, got the lowest dropout rate, got a large percent, probably one of the largest percentages of students from a public school system that go on to education after high school. We have a pretty reasonable parks and recreation system. The baseball fields, we need a new baseball field. You've got hundreds of calls from people saying, "Come in and put us in new baseball fields," and you put 'em in back behind the middle school. Where are those people saying now? We've got to pay for that. That takes tax money. Stimulus money is short-term and focused projects. State money's gone down. The cost of living has gone up. Fuel costs and health costs have gone up faster than the cost of living. Assessments, my understanding is, are more or less flat. It was mentioned earlier in the work session that a number of city employees are paid less in surrounding localities. I want these services to continue and improve. By all means, city staff and this council should be frugal, but in the end, please raise my taxes on my property while making sure that you do everything you can to defer the taxes of the elderly and those who can't afford it. There are state laws in place, and the city has done a good work with that program, and I urge them to go out and be proactive and try to find more people that need to use it. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Be sure to get his address so we can send him a letter. Okay, anyone else? Mr. Cott?
Good evening, my name's Robert Cox. I live at 14 Pecoson River Drive. I'm not sure I want to follow that message. And I've later been talking about the budget, but I did want to say about the assessment of the tax rate increase. I support the tax rate increase only if it's used to prevent us in this budget from dipping into the unrestricted funds. That's the rainy day fund, and it'll bring back the option of having a capital program, which in this budget we've eliminated, more or less. I'll leave my other comments for the budget.
All right.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Cox. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
My name is Deborah Foster. I live at 54 Pasture Road, and I don't know if anything's been discussed yet on the tax rate, but the assessment that we got, is that the actual assessment that the land is going to increase by? Because it went from like last year for 53.8 to 97.2.
Is that what the, is that your new assessment?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am. Well, that's what the assessor's office assessed your property. That's correct. Have you, have you now, have you since then made an appointment to discuss that with him?
Uh-uh, no.
Okay, well, that's, that's one of the first things you should need to do. He's sitting right behind you. You can get him in a hole. I'm just teasing. I'm just teasing. Seriously, if you would, if you would just call the assessor's office, say, "We got that number." What is it?
868-3080.
868-3080.
Yeah, because I think I called him last year, too, when it was going to, when they sent this assessment out, and I think last year it was really going up. They had it really assessed high, but then when it came out, it didn't go up as high as it did. I think it only went up like, well, last year it was flat, but this year $43,000 increase.
See, the only guidance I could give you tonight is to make that appointment with the assessor.
Okay. Well, is this about the tax rates here?
If you'd like to, yes, ma'am. If you'd like to speak, you know, regarding the real property tax increase, you can do that.
Because are you going to increase the tax rate?
We, we have not made a decision whether we will or whether we won't.
No, because it's kind of high. It's a large increase.
Whatever we do, I can assure you, you'll know about it shortly.
Okay.
Okay? Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, we'll close the public hearing then, and there's no action required on that argument tonight. Second public hearing is the proposed FY 2009, 2010 annual financial plan. It'll be the first reading. Ms. Wiggins, any comments?
Yes, the proposed FY 2010 budget document was presented to you at the last meeting. A public hearing has been scheduled for this meeting, which will constitute the first reading of the tax rate ordinances, as well as the new rate for the garbage collection system. Teresa Owens, your finance director, will give you the formal presentation on this budget document.
Okay.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council, citizens of Pecoson. Presented for your review tonight is the city manager's proposed annual financial plan for fiscal year 2010. Council has indicated that taxes and fees be kept at, kept to a minimal increase. The real estate rate proposed in this budget is 87 cent per $100 of assessed value. It's an increase of 6 percent from 2009. Our financial advisors, Davenport and Company, have advised us not to use fund balance at this time. They have indicated that this be maintained at its current level or greater. Council is committed to maintaining quality schools and providing basic funding for school operations. The proposed budget maintains level funding for the school operations, which fully funds the superintendent's request. The fiscal year 2010 revenue sources are from general property taxes, other local taxes, other local revenue, state and federal revenue, and transfers and the use of fund balance. The budget is approximately $23.6 million for fiscal year 10, a reduction of a little over $200,000 from fiscal year 2009. The proposed budget includes a real estate rate of 87 cent, which is a 6 cent increase from fiscal year 2009. The 2010 is a reassessment year, with the overall assessments coming in as flat. Some properties may have increases, some may have decreases, decreases, but, but as a whole, the assessment itself is flat. Since the state has capped their reimbursement to localities for personal property tax relief, the city has adopted a specific relief method. Therefore, the tax relief percentage will be at 60 percent this year, as opposed to 50 percent the prior year, which will, which will result in a decrease in the taxes paid by the citizens. There is also a $600,000 or almost 25 percent decrease in the personal property taxes. This is mainly due to the reduction in the assessed value and the decrease in new purchases due to the current economy. There are no other recommended changes in the general fund, local tax rates, licenses, or fees. Other local taxes are proposed at approximately $2.5 million. The general fund realizes revenue from a variety of smaller local taxes, such as sales tax, communication sales and use tax, meals tax, consumer utility tax, and business license. Other local taxes account for 11 percent of our total revenue in the general fund. Other local revenue is 300, approximately $343,000. This revenue includes permits, licenses and fees, fines and forfeitures, interest on investments, rental of property, and charges for services and miscellaneous revenue. State revenues are approximately $3.7 million. This revenue includes street, street highway maintenance, library aid, PPTRA, and the DMV Federal revenues are expected to be approximately $600,000, $6,000. It's a decrease of approximately $93,000. Included in this revenue source is federal funds for Plum Tree Island and other federal aid. The decrease is due mainly to the ending of the COPS grant and other miscellaneous federal grants that the city receives. The transfer from the sewer fund is proposed at $130,000, which is the same from the previous year. The sewer fund reimburses the general fund for services that are provided from engineering, public works, and the finance department, mostly primarily for the salaries of those Transfer from the school is proposed at $300,000. In the past, the school had received state lottery funds and school construction funds that were transferred to the city to assist in the payment of school debt. During the general assembly this year, the lottery funds were distributed to other school programs, and the school construction funds were eliminated. The school is expected to receive approximately $900,000 in federal stimulus money, and of that money, they plan on transferring to the city $300,000 for payment of the school debt. We propose to use approximately $350,000 from unappropriate fund balance to balance the general fund. It is anticipated that this will be zero with the adopted budget due to the debt restructuring that will be finalized later this week. General fund expenditures increased from approximately $23 million in fiscal year '07 to a proposed increase of $23.6 million in fiscal year '10, a minimal increase of approximately $614,000 or 3 percent in four years. City personnel expenses are projected to be eight point, approximately $8.3 million. This is a decrease of $114,000 from fiscal year '09, and this is mostly due to the elimination of two vacant positions that we are not funding this year. The city cost of operations are currently at $4 million. These costs include office supplies, utility costs, property insurance, maintenance, fuel, and joint operations. Capital for fiscal year '10 is proposed to be $219,000 in the general fund. This cost, the cost for '07 was approximately $500,000, and '08, $820,000, and '09, $243,000. This is a decrease of approximately $300,000 from fiscal year 2007. Our debt service has increased to $2.7 million, an increase of approximately $350,000 from fiscal year 2007. The school contribution increased from approximately $7.9 million in 2007 to approximately $8.3 million in 2010. Between fiscal year 2007 and 2010, we added one personnel in fire, a half-time equivalent, full-time equivalent in the library, one in grounds and transferred, and two for public works. We deleted 4.5 full-time equivalent dispatchers and deleted one civil engineer and one COO director. Those were the two positions that were vacant this year. Oops. From 2007 to 2010, the overall, we overall decreased in the general fund 1.85 full-time equivalent positions. Including all funds, the city has decreased 4.35 full-time equivalent employees. Our legislative and administration accounts for 8 percent of the general fund. Included in this is city council, the city manager's budget, legal audit, commissioner, the assessor, treasurer, finding its technology and risk management. School contribution accounts for 35 percent of the total general fund spending. Including the debt service for the schools, the total is approximately $10.3 million or 43 percent of the total city budget. Public safety accounts for 25 percent of the general fund budget. This includes the police, fire, courts, sheriff, corrections, inspections, and animal control. Public works accounts for 8 percent of the general fund budget. This includes engineering, public works, street and lights, and facilities and grounds. Parks and recreation and library count for 4 percent of the general fund budget. The transfer to the debt service is $2.7 million, which is an increase of approximately 7.5 percent. Operation cost is budgeted to be about $4 million, which is a 4.3 percent decrease. Some of the areas that we have increases in operations that we really have little or no control over in these costs are your juvenile detention, which increased approximately $93,000, your animal control, which is approximately $3,600, mental health costs, mostly to the Crossroads Teen House of approximately $3,400, and social services, which increased approximately $31,000. The increase in the, in the social services cost is due to the allocation that has been changed because it wasn't allocated properly in previous years. The increase for outside agencies are offset by the decreases in city operational line items. Included in the decrease is training, travel, contracted labor, community developed computer equipment and vehicles. There is an increase in the transfer to the debt service fund of $194,000 into solid waste of $45,000. There is a decrease in the transfer to special revenue fund of $50,000, mostly due to the mitigation and the raising of houses being completed this year. Capital projects of $285,000, a decrease in the transfer to the park and recreation fund of $54,000, and the IDA of $83,000. The overall decrease in transfers out is approximately $234,000. $219,000 is proposed for the general fund capital outlay items. Included in these are limited small equipment items, fire hose replacement tools, computer and library book replacement. This includes $54,000 for public works for street maintenance, materials, curb and gutters, and small tool replacements, $20,000 for two copiers, $134,000 for library books, of which we receive $151,000 of this, of those from the state for the purpose of those library 87 percent of the revenue comes from general property taxes. We are dependent on single-family residential taxpayer base and the commercial and agricultural accounts for 5 percent of our total assessments. Many items have been identified as needs in the proposed capital improvement plan, but have been pushed out to years longer than desired, and some projects may not be achievable. In this CIP are projects greater than $100,000. The city currently does not have a replacement policy for smaller assets, such as police cars, computers, and equipment. The IDA has also identified projects that are not funded. The IDA is involved in the business development of the city. They own some of the land that could be used for the development. A number of infrastructure improvements, such as stormwater management facilities and roadways in the big woods, may be necessary before development is possible. There are no full-time positions proposed in the, in the proposed budget, even though the city is still well below the National Fire Protection Association recommendations. Three additional firefighter paramedics are needed. Staffing may not be adequate for public works and mosquito control for street and drainage, as well as building maintenance and facilities. The city offers post-retirement health insurance to retirees, but does not pay for any of those costs. This is a highly desired benefit for the employees. The debt services projected expenditures are $2.9 million. The debt service of, of $2.7 million will be paid out of the transfer from the general fund. The remaining $148,000 will be funded with the use of debt reserve. This is the final year of a three-year plan to draw down the debt reserve balance. The graph in fiscal year '10 proposed budget depicts the city's debt service over the years. The city's largest outstanding debt is from school general obligation bonds, which were used for school construction projects. The city also has other bonds and notes, which have been used to pay various school and city projects. As shown on the graph, there is a large spike in fiscal year '11 in the debt service for the school bonds. As planned, as planned, these bonds will be retired with permanent financing. This chart reflects the recent actions taken by council to restructure the city's debt. As mentioned earlier, the debt restructuring will be finalized later this week. The adopted budget will reflect, will reflect this action. The capital projects budget is $392,000 from VDOT for highways and streets. Funds are used at the city's discretion. We anticipate receiving a total of $1,082,000 that is broken out of $690,000 in the general fund and $392,000 in the capital projects fund. Solid waste fund total budget for fiscal year '10 is expected to be $812,000, of which $14,000 is the use of net assets and $45,000 is a transfer from the general fund. This is the second full year of the container cart program. City staff began the implementation of this container cart program on October 1st, 2007. Citizens have the option to select a container cart size and will be billed bi-monthly along with the sewer service fee. A proposed rate change of $2 to $16 for plans, depending on, depending on the plan for the homeowner, the homeowner selects. This increase in the fees on a weighted average basis will cost the homeowner less than $35 a year or 6 percent per billing cycle. Green trash bags will still be available for those residents who need additional disposal service. A proposed fee of $1.75 per green bag has not changed. There is also an increase in the cost of collections of 5 percent to our contractor bay disposal, but a decrease in the overall operating expenditures of this fund. The utilities fund provides for the maintenance of sewer lines and pump stations. The fiscal year '10 expenses are projected to be $2.6 million or approximately $200,000 more than in 2009. Even though the personnel services have decreased, operating expenses have increased approximately $250,000. This increase is due mostly to the requirements of the consent order as mandated by the courts. On April 13, 2009, council approved a debt refinancing, which includes a debt restructuring that will free up approximately $800,000 over a three-year period. It is anticipated that these savings from the debt will be used for the fine portion of the court word mandates. In order to pay for the sewer extension, small increases were pre-planned for several years. In fiscal year 2006, the sewer service fee increased to a $50 bi-monthly. This change in the billing schedule has helped homeowners pay the fee. The fee is proposed to remain the same for fiscal year 2010. Businesses will continue to pay the $50 bi-monthly fee plus the commercial consumption fee of $1.75 for every 100 cubic feet of water. We project that approximately 4,900 households and businesses will use sewers next year. Parks and recreation fund budget for fiscal year '10 is proposed to be approximately $381,000, which is $57,000 less than in the fiscal year '09 budget. This fund accounts for the parks and recreational activities, which are financed by user fees, the pool, and special events. This year's budget includes a $46,000 transfer from the general fund to help supplement user fees for various activities. This is a reduction of $54,000 from fiscal year 2009. 2010 proposed budget for fleet management fund is $772,000 or a decrease of approximately $102,000. Fees are charged to the city departments and schools based on their usage of the fleet The budget document is available for viewing at the Pecoson Public Library, the city manager's office, and is also posted on the city's website. Once adopted, the approved budget will also be on the city's website. Tonight, your documents include the budget appropriation ordinance and the levies on the real estate and personal property. This is the first reading, and we are currently scheduled to adopt the budget on May 11th. The budget must be adopted by May 23rd. At this point, I'll take any questions you may have.
Teresa, thank you very much. Well done. Any questions, Teresa?
I said one question, Teresa. The cost to dispatchers, is that under the shared cost with York County courts and sheriff?
I'm sorry, I didn't.
The dispatchers that we have up in, you know, that we have with York County?
Yes, that's one of the shared costs that we have, yes.
Has that gone up from?
No, it has not gone up.
It has not yet?
No.
So.
A matter of time. Any other questions, Teresa?
May I follow up on that, that sheriff's? Looking through the budget, I think we pay 19.9 percent.
Yes, sir.
Of the total cost for the sheriffs, and I think that is an arrangement that was made several years ago when there were a whole lot more people. Well, the population ratios have changed since that agreement was made. Could we look into getting that redone for next year so we pay a lower percentage, more in line with the number of people who now live in Pecoson?
Councilman Marie, that percentage was established when we became an independent city. It was a percentage established by court order, and in order to have that changed, it would have to be changed by court.
And was the basis originally because Pecoson was 19.9 percent of the population?
It was.
Okay.
Don't look at me, I was only 12 years old.
Don't look at me, I wasn't here. Well, still, I think that's, that's something that's changed.
Yeah, you've got to go through the same process.
Okay, other questions, Teresa? If not, Teresa, thank you very much. Appreciate the time and effort putting this budget together and your staff as well. Okay, let's open the public hearing then, and if there's anyone in the audience that would like to address the proposed fiscal year 2009, 2010 annual financial plan. Anyone? Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening, Ms. Wiggins.
Councilmembers. My name is Travis Wright, and I'm a career firefighter medic for the city of the Pecoson Fire Department, and I've been asked to speak tonight on behalf of the Pecoson professional firefighters concerning the upcoming 2009, 2010 fiscal budget. It is our understanding that with the up-and-coming budget, there will be mandatory budget cuts that could affect our staffing. We come here tonight to show our support to city council and ask that if any fire department positions are to be vacated by either retirement or termination, that these positions will be filled as soon as possible, so that the staffing levels in the department do not decrease. We believe that any personnel reduction would not only We believe that any personnel reduction would not only further endanger the life of every firefighter on the fire ground, but would jeopardize the lives of the citizens and property that we are charged to protect on a daily basis. As of right now, the maximum number of on-duty career firefighters in this city stands at nine. With the staffing of five apparatus and one command vehicle, you can see that we are currently working with a bare minimum staff, as this staffing is a maximum and does not include anyone that is on vacation or out on sick leave. The fire chief has set a maximum of two personnel off per day, including persons on sick leave. With the maximum personnel allowed off, we are at a staffing level of seven for the entire city, protecting a population of 11,556 people and an estimated 4,000 households. This equates to one firefighter for every 1,650 people or one firefighter for every 571 households. The National Fire Protection Association, or NFPA, the world's leading advocate of fire prevention and an authoritative source on public safety, has set a minimum acceptable standard for fire department manpower. This standard, known as Standard 17-10, contains the minimum requirements in the deployment of career fire and EMS personnel responding to emergencies. 17-10's minimum personnel for an initial full alarm assignment, such as a first alarm house fire, stands at 15 firefighters within eight minutes of the original dispatch. As you can see, our workforce is already far below this standard and has been since this standard was adopted by NFPA in 2004. The standard also addresses the minimum staffing requirements for emergency equipment. The standard states that fire engines and ladder trucks shall be staffed with a minimum of four on-duty personnel per unit. With Pecosa's two fire engines, one ladder truck, two ambulances, and one command vehicle, we should have at least 17 firefighters on duty at any one time. Again, we are currently operating well below this standard, and that any reduction from our current workforce would further distance us from the standard and place every firefighter at a greater risk for injury or even worse on the fire ground. We, as professional firefighters, do not wish to see our fellow brothers or sisters harmed in the performance of their duties, especially due to the lack of manpower. Since being appointed to fire chief in 2006, Chief Holloway has done an excellent job in bringing our department up to safety standards and trying to comply with the current NFPA regulations. We also believe that any staff reductions would negate his accomplishments and risks casting a dark shadow on his current administration. Every firefighter in this department takes pride in what they do and are proud of where they work. Our job is our passion, and as every firefighter's wife or husband can tell you, this is a lifestyle and not just a job for us. Please, consider public safety when evaluating the budget. We must be able to continue to perform our duties as professionals and do so at the same level or better than we do today. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Travis. Thank you very much. Anyone else? Yes, sir, Mr. Cox?
My name's Robert Cox, I live at 14th Coast and River Drive. In this budget, you're being asked to make some difficult decisions. To keep expenditures down, you're asked to effectively eliminate the capital budget so there'll be no funds for bike paths and parks and schools and other needed improvements. You're being asked to dip in, as far as I can understand it, correct me if I'm wrong, into the unrestricted funds or rainy day fund.
Mr. Cox, let me make a comment. I don't think this council was just talking about that at all, unless I missed something.
I think that was in the proposed budget, and I think Teresa said that we're going to be using the debt refinancing so that we don't have to go into the unrestricted funds.
Okay. The point is, that's not an item that we discussed here as a council. Using our unappropriated fund balances. As a matter of fact, in our work session, Mr. Cox, I don't mean to interrupt you, we tried to talk about some ways to boost that rather than.
Okay, that's good.
Take any hits on that.
Thanks.
Yes, sir.
And you're being asked to eliminate two city employees' positions, not employees, to tell the remaining employees that they'll get no merit increases or cost of living this year. The same employees will also have to pay more healthcare benefits, I understand it, and they'll see less money in their paycheck. And these are not things that we like to ask of anyone. But you're also being asked to look out for the city client, the taxpayer, those of us who are homeowners, in this bad financial situation, and their income and their ability to pay taxes has also gone down. Many property owners in the private sector, retirements, have seen their income go down more than 30%. And other residents have seen their businesses' income go down and their hours significantly reduced, benefits reduced, and have even lost their jobs. And as I said in the earlier hearing, I do support a tax increase for cost of living only if it's to prevent us from cutting the capital program. I would support it to bring back a capital program to make improvements that are needed in this city. But I really strongly believe that we should not just increase taxes to avoid dealing with the long-term problem that I've highlighted before. I know it's a difficult one that the city has, a long-term problem of rising personnel Except for the past year, almost every budget in the last 10 years has increased by more than twice the rate of inflation. And the reason for this is rising personnel costs. The budget goes up faster than the rate of inflation because the majority of the costs for the city, $8 million, I believe, out of really what I'd call 12 million if you take the school out, the majority of costs for city personnel are city personnel-related, and it's mathematically impossible to keep budgets and therefore taxes to the rate of inflation without reducing personnel costs over the long term. We don't pay our employees more than other localities, my understanding, or give significantly better benefits, but in the past 10 years, our workforce has increased by about 20 employees or 17%. And this is even after taking into account the two reductions we've heard about tonight. This year's budget is lower than last year's, and that's good, but it's a short-term fix that cannot be sustained unless the council has a strategy to deal with long-term personnel costs. And I ask the council to take the opportunity to develop a plan to adjust personnel expenditures to a level that will ensure the city's long-term financial health with taxes rising approximately only in line with inflation but keeping a capital program. We've stopped funding our capital improvements and we're moving funds around so that we can pay our personnel, which is a good thing to do in one year, but we are going to be faced with this every year until we've dealt with this dilemma. If the city fails to deal with this issue, there'll be no capital improvements and no way to avoid increasing taxes each year faster than the cost of living. I have one other issue I'd like to bring to council's attention on the budget. We're all hoping that the economy will improve in the next 12 months, but it may not. Do we have a contingency plan if this recession is to continue for more than this year? And I ask that a statement be put into the budget or from the council as, you know, hopefully to address this unlikely possibility. We need to look, in my opinion, we need to look at just more than the one year. So in conclusion, although we're in a serious financial situation right now, it does offer a timely opportunity for the council to adjust personnel expenditures to a level that will ensure not just this year's financial health, but more importantly, the city's long-term financial health. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cox. Appreciate it. Anyone else?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of council, citizens and guests, staff. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak this evening. My name is Chris Claude and live at 268 Little Florida Road, and I'm currently the chairman of, or the vice-chairman of, the Pecosa Public Library Advisory Board. And I've been asked to speak tonight on behalf of our board, and some of the members are present here this evening. As you know, the advisory board members are appointed by you, the city council, to serve as a liaison between the library and local government and the community to promote library services and programs as well as to ensure that adequate funds are available to support these efforts. Therefore, we as a board would like to respectively request that you consider the importance of the library to our community when making your difficult decisions with the library's fiscal year 2010 budget. We'd first like to sincerely thank you and former councils for your unwavering commitment to our library, its staff, volunteers, and patrons through the years. Your generous support has been sincerely appreciated. However, we feel it is also important for us to express our concerns with the budget reductions proposed for the coming fiscal year. If adopted, such reduction means fewer books, periodicals, online databases, and other resources that would be made available to our community. Also, the Commonwealth of Virginia provides the library with approximately 40 cents of additional funds for each dollar of local funding that's provided, so every 100-dollar reduction in the library budget would actually result in $140 loss in the funding. The library, we believe, provides a high return on investment to our community. It's an essential part of the lifestyle we enjoy here in Pecosa, a way of life which encourages others to settle here as well. Also serves as an equalizer, giving citizens free access to not just the world of books and ideas, but also the vast resources of the internet. As a council, we know you're committed to maintaining the excellent quality of local education, and we believe community education and the public library go hand in hand. Our library is often the first and sometimes the only educational institution available to preschoolers. It also supplements students when the school libraries are closed and provides support for lifelong learners of all ages. The library provides additional funding for other city needs as well. Last year alone, over $78,000 in fines and fees were collected and deposited in the city's revenue account. Here are a few interesting statistics. In fiscal year 2008, the average public library patron made 10 visits, borrowed 17 items free of charge, roughly 12 books, six DVDs. If the same patron purchased these books and DVDs, they would have spent approximately $173 for those same items. In addition to lending materials, the library provides free internet access to an average of 44 patrons a day, also offers meeting rooms, free notary public services, 823 of which were performed last year, and passport services which generated over $39,000 of city revenue. Finally, there were 110 informational and educational programs attended last year by over 8,000 people free of charge. During this time of economic crisis, the demand for free information and entertainment is reflected in the double-digit increase in library and circulation materials. The library's many programs and cultural events are filled to capacity, and it's been proven that in tough economic times, more Americans turn to their libraries. We've been appointed by you to assist the library in planning its future, and we again respectfully ask each of you to carefully consider our concerns when reviewing and discussing the upcoming budget. Thank you for your time and your consideration.
Chris, thank you so much. And please pass on to the rest of the board. I appreciate you for the job that they do. We appreciate it very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir, thank you. Anybody else? Anyone else? All righty, we'll close the public hearing, and there's no action required on that this evening. And we'll move into new business. First item is a resolution appointing representatives to the Regional Air Service Enhancement Fund Committee. Ms. Wiggins, some comments?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, at the last meeting, we discussed the funds that were donated to the RACE committee by the Port Authority and our representation at that committee meetings. And presented for your consideration, based on your direction, is a resolution appointing our representatives to that committee. And in the past, those representatives have been from the IDA and one of our city employees.
Does it have to be from the IDA?
It may, I'll answer that question in total knowledge, but I will tell you that every other jurisdiction either has an IDA member or a city council member. And that Mr. Freeman, Manfred Freeman, the IDA representative, has been our informal representative for the last five, six years, and Dave Callis has been the city representative. When the issue regarding the funding to go to the airport came up, the airport asked for, I mean, the Port Authority asked for approval to transfer the money to the airport. When that came up, I determined, at least by asking some questions, that none of these folks had been officially appointed by the city council, so I had to come to you to get that approval for that to take place. And since we had never formally designated these representatives, this was brought back to you so that if you desired, we could put forth a duly constituted representative and alternate from the city of Pecosa.
I certainly don't have any problem with the two names you just mentioned. Wayne, because they're not here, it'd be a good time to appoint.
That's right. Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion that we adopt a resolution appointing representatives to the Regional Air Enhancement Fund Committee with the names of Manfred Freeman from the IDA and Dave Callis as the alternate.
All right, sir, thank you. Okay, we have a motion made, and seconded, that we adopt the resolution with those two names inserted. Any questions, comments? Nothing, okay?
Certainly. Councilman Hunt?
Aye.
Councilman Krieger?
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford?
Aye.
Councilman Murray?
Aye.
Councilman Freeman?
Aye.
Councilman Holloway?
Aye.
And Mayor Houseley? Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by vote is seven to zero.
Okay, thanks, lady. We're going to item two in the new business, which is a resolution making nominations to the VML Policy Committee. Judy, some comments?
Mr. Mayor and members of council, during your discussion at the last meeting on the nominees, there was some comment made that we'd never pointed anyone to the Human Development and Education Policy Committee from the school system. And then we also, when I went back and looked at last year's correspondence, realized that there actually was a new committee formed last year that council had not appointed membership to. So presented tonight for your consideration is a resolution considering a nominee from the school system to the Human Development and Education Policy Committee and also a nominee or two for the Community and Economic Development Committee.
All right, Judy, thank you. Anyone prepared?
Mr. Mayor, I talked with the school superintendent today, Dr. Parrish, about the Human Development and Education and having a person from the school system on there. And because the breadth of the Human Development and Education is so broad, it takes in schools, it takes in the social services aspect, and it also deals with York County Social Services. And we agreed that instead of having her have someone from her staff or whatever go to a VML meeting, that I would attend on behalf of both the school system and the city's behalf and bring back the draft slate for, you know, for the lobbyists, whatever, run it past her and her staff, and send it also up to York County Social Services. And she agreed that that would probably be the best way because of the restriction on travel and whatever else, and she agreed to let me, you know, carry the sword.
All right. So that's for Human Development?
I think she just skated the nomination.
Frank, to understand you're right, you also do Community and Economic Development?
No, that's somebody else.
Oh. We've got one of them resolved. How about the other? The Community and Economic Development.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to insert the names of Tom Marie and Tracy Crawford in that Community and Economic Development.
I'll second. It doesn't matter, it's gonna be out booted. All right, okay, we've got a.
Somebody else can second.
Actually, wait a minute.
I'll second that one.
We've got to have a motion for yours.
No.
You've already done it, okay, good enough. Okay, so the Community and Economic Development, and we've got Tom Marie and Tracy Crawford. Okay. Did I hear a second, I'm sorry?
I second.
Okay, there was one. Okay, any questions of council? Any comments?
Thanks, thanks.
Anytime, that's what he said.
I don't know if it's fair play.
Nick, please.
Certainly. Councilman Murray?
I'm staying.
Councilman Freeman?
Aye.
Councilman Krieger?
Aye.
Councilman Holloway?
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford?
Aye.
And Mayor Houseley.
Mayor. Yes, I'm trying to carry on a conversation with the manager here.
It was I.
Oh, I. Thank you, Judy.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by vote is six to zero with an extension.
All right, thank you. All right. All right, let me just ask council, I know we've discussed this in our work session just a little bit, that you want to resolve the Popple Road issue with a vote of council tonight?
I'd... Yes, I would.
Okay. So I'm ready for your motion.
I'd like to make a motion that the parking be allowed on Popple Road and the no parking signs be taken down in the eleven spaces closest to Pecosin Avenue.
Were you saying on one side of the road?
Where the existing marked spaces are. Continue to park in where the existing spaces are and take down the no parking signs on that side of the road.
All right.
I second the motion.
Well, hold on, a little point of order here. Don't we need to add it to the agenda first?
It is on the agenda.
It's not even amended.
It's added, too.
Did I hear a second, Councilwoman Crawford?
Anytime, it's any questions. It's not...
I think...
I'm sorry, Frank.
I think the city manager has made her, you know, had made the decision for the city. And I think what's done is done on Popple Road, period. So, I mean, you have the vote now.
So the vote is, what now?
It's...
Take the signs.
Take the signs down, so a positive vote would take them down and a negative vote would...
Leave them up, right. And the basic reason that I'm doing this is there's been parking on Popple Road for a long time, and we had a demonstration that was done that showed for the school, the width of the road was acceptable to allow emergency vehicles through. There was some concern that was raised for the houses where there would be parking in front of the houses. However, that was a pre-existing condition, since there has been parking in front of the school, and also it is similar to our other houses we have in town. When you have cars in front, you're going to have that same concern, and we don't prohibit parking in other parts of town in front of houses for safety concerns.
Okay.
And I'd like to also mention that the fire chief recommended that vehicle parking on the school side be discouraged, but not eliminated. His recommendation was not to eliminate it, it was to discourage it. So I would... That's what I'd like to point out.
Okay. All right, we have a motion made and a seconded. Okay?
Councilman Hunt?
No.
Councilman Krieger?
No.
Councilwoman Crawford?
Aye.
Councilman Marie?
Aye.
Councilman Freeman?
No.
Councilman Holloway?
No.
Mayor Housal?
No.
Mr. Mayor, the motion failed by a voter two to five.
Okay, thanks a lot, Vic. Let's move on to the comments of our acting city manager, Ms. Wiggins.
I want to bring to your attention that at the next meeting, we will have a public hearing on our school board appointments. It will only be a public hearing, and only the names submitted at that meeting can be considered when you make the appointment at the next meeting. We have been advertising for this position for over a month. Our response has been minimal, but we do open it up for anyone who would like to serve. We have three appointments. Eastern Precinct and At-Large appointments are to be filled. The incumbent from the Central Precinct is eligible for reappointment, so we encourage anyone that's interested to contact our office for a board bank application. To launch this year's campaign on hurricane and flooding preparedness, there's going to be a sales tax holiday in Virginia from May the 25th through May the 31st, and during this period, you can purchase items such as bottled water, flashlights, cell phone batteries, flashlight batteries, anything having to do during, that you will need during emergency. You can purchase these items exempt from any taxes. And that's all I have tonight.
Okay, Judy, thank you very much.
Tracy?
I don't have anything, but thank you very much for asking.
Glad to do it.
I think we'd be remiss if we didn't talk, I guess, a little bit about the budget. I'm sure a lot of people are here tonight because of their interest in the budget, and I appreciate the comments of the people that spoke. It's no secret here that we've got a tough job as far as the city of Pecosin. And I think the one thing I guess I would like to do, if you could put slide number three back up on there. Think you can handle that while I talk a minute? So council's really under a lot of pressure here. We've got a well-run city, a tremendous talent of employees, and employees are what make the services go. It is our intention in every case to protect those employees, because the fire truck showing up just doesn't happen by itself, okay? The police car showing up just doesn't happen by itself. So we did take on a new school and a new debt, and we have to pay for that. We also took on a new fire station and a new debt for that, and that was well-needed and well-deserved. So what we have done so far is we have refinanced that debt, and that's really a tribute to the citizens of the city of Pecosin, because it is through our good credit rating as a city that we are able to pull off deals similar to that. And that simple refinancing saved about three-hundred thousand dollars a year, or several jobs, okay? That's one of the first things that we did, and that action's been completed. We've also looked at every available option. So you've probably heard out there, especially if you work for the city, that we looked at every available options. We looked at everything, because Pecosin is still a small community, and we do talk to each other, and the word, as you go from person to person to person, gets more and more, the story changes. So we've looked at everything from cutting salaries to looking at eliminating positions. We've looked at every single option. You've probably heard the option that we've looked at, charging for rescue squad services. We are looking at every available option to make sure that we can come out of this hole, and also that the people that live here can come out of this hole. You're not going to hear any support from this seat of council for an eight-cent tax increase, okay? Eight-cent tax increase, bad economic times for the average citizen, it's just not going to come up. Operations-wise, the city's actually always operated on a shoestring, and I see we found another four-point-three percent of decrease, even though fuel costs are increasing and the like. The school has, for one time, probably the first time in my twelve years here, I'm applauding what the schools have done. The schools have really looked at their budget, they have really buckled down, and they have brought us a reduced school budget, and I greatly appreciate that, that gesture. I know that they recognize the challenge that we've got as well, and I really appreciate that. But look at where the numbers really are. The general property tax, we are still showing an increase there. Other local taxes, we're showing a decrease there. That's because of personal property tax, essentially. The value of cars, if nobody has figured out the real economic situation out there, the value of cars has dropped about off the map. Nobody's car is worth what it was, and that shows basically a decrease. The other local revenue, mild increases, but look at that state and federal number, okay? So not only are we taking on new debt to run our schools, to run our stuff, but the state and federal government, even with the discussion of, you know, incentivizing the economy, whatever, that's the budget number. So we have to make up for that, okay? Transfers, again, another hundred-and-forty-three thousand, and the use of the fund balance, which I think was adequately addressed by the mayor, that this council's not going to dip into the rainy day fund. We lived through a Hurricane Isabel, we know how important it is to have that. We also know how important it is to have that to do the things that we just did on the refi. So we've got a lot of options out there, and none of them are off the table. I don't want anybody leaving here tonight saying, you know, there's a magic bullet. There's not a magic bullet for the council. However, I do think that we're going to be able to get this down within reason, and I also believe that a zero-cent tax increase is within the realm of possibility while protecting the key services. So don't want anybody leaving here, you know, thinking that, hey, it's all good. It's not all good, but it is manageable, and we are in a fine financial condition to manage that. So that's all I'm going to say about the budget. On the parking thing, you know, I'm kind of distracted by that, that we seem to have a fighting, an infighting within some of our city staff about an issue that is so petty that our council had to vote on that. I don't believe that... I believe there's adequate parking at the middle school, and I think if anybody drives down there where we've taken down the tennis courts to do that, that I'm very disappointed in the fact that, you know, a rule changes, that we can't live with change, because sometimes things just develop, and you know what? If I lived on that street and people parked in front of my house every day for eight hours a day, I think I'd be a little concerned. So it's not only the rights of the school, but it's the rights of the citizens that live near the school that we're trying to look out for.
That's all I've got. All right, thank you.
Thanks. Just a couple of things. I want to thank everybody for coming out and sharing your viewpoints on this budget. I've been sitting on this council for quite a few years, and every year at budget time, we seemed, we faced the same perils. We have so many needs and a limited amount of money to address those needs. This council has been prudent in focusing on core services in this city. This city doesn't have any money. We have a block of money set aside for emergency situations in this city should they occur, but if we want to build a new fire station, we've got to go out and borrow that money and find a way to pay the debt service on that money. There's no additional monies any year since I've been here to look at capital projects. If you look at our capital projects, you'll see that we carry them from year to year to year. And we have, in the past, gone into the unappropriated fund balance to balance our budgets. We have to have a balanced budget, and I will tell you, for me and the rest of these guys, the first thing that they're going to look at, and lady, is the core services required in this city. We must maintain those, and, you know, as far as bank salaries is concerned, that's what I will support. It's tough economic times. There are people in this city, as we heard the gentleman speak tonight, that can afford a tax increase. There are a whole lot of people in this city that cannot. There are a whole lot of people in this city who are not making it now. They're living on money that they're going to have to repay someday, and hopefully, we're going to see better economic times. But I can convey to every one of you, this is one of the toughest, if not the toughest budget that I have ever tried to work through, and Teresa has done a great job. She has given us the information, and that's what this council needs, is enough information for us as laypeople to sit back and make the decisions on what's best for this city. And I sincerely believe that every person sitting here in these chairs has that same focus. So I just want to thank everybody, Mr. Mayor, for participating.
Good deal, thank you. Tom?
Yes. A couple of things. First, we talked a little bit about the assessments tonight, and I'd like to point out that on the city website, there's a very good PowerPoint presentation done by Mr. Fason. It's entitled, if you go to the webpage, it's PowerPoint, it explains why the assessment came out the way it did, and it's under FY 2010 Assessment Process is the link that you click on. And I, anyone has any questions, I recommend you go look at that, and I'm sure anybody here on council likes to talk to you, because I know I've had a lot of people talk to me about the assessments. And also, of course, talk to Mr. Fason if you have any question about your specific one. Second thing is, I thought the airshow over the weekend was really good. I'd like to commend, lyingly, on putting that on. It was a lot of good demonstrations. A lot of people came to town, saw this area, it was good. On the budget, I could talk for a long time about it, and I don't really want to tonight, other than to echo that it is a very difficult budget. We have to balance the budget, and I'm concerned that for our city workers, that they are being asked to pay more in health care, and they're also getting a pay freeze, and many of these workers don't make very much money, especially compared to other municipalities. So that's something... What I'd like to do, if we could, is have a work session next week to talk about this, because we're supposed to vote on it in two weeks. So if we could arrange to have a work session, I don't know if banks... I think you mentioned around town. If we could arrange to have a work session to go through, because I think there's an awful lot of details and things that we need to talk about. All right, John, thank you.
Eric? Well, I also thank everyone for coming out. Made a good turnout. I can't really add anything to what's already been said about the budget. I thought Councilman Hunt summarized it really well. It is going to be tough. I had had several folks ask me about the garbage recycling schedule that they were proposing changing, and Mr. Wilson talked about some new information at our work session. And if you wouldn't mind, Graham, would you tell the people there?
I'd be happy to. We heard from Bay Disposal today. As everyone knows, it lives along the Little Florida stretch where Wednesday's trash and recycling is currently being picked up. The recycling contractor, Tidewater Fiber, through VIPSa, has made a change to their schedule, which will become effective, I believe, this week, where the trash we no longer pick up on Wednesday, and the recycling will be on Thursday. That, so the recycling will be switched, but the trash was going to remain on Wednesday. We've talked to the trash contractor today. He has decided that he can change his schedule to coincide with the recycling, so probably it would be my guess, within a month, we should have those residents affected by the change to recycling to be on the same schedule once again, and we'll have further information to the citizens as soon as we can get it.
So it will go back to the same day?
It'll go back to Thursday. It'll go, it'll all be on Thursday.
Thanks a lot.
You're welcome.
That's all I have.
All right, Gary, thank you.
Yeah, I just want to thank the city staff who were involved with the recycling and the garbage pickup, because, I mean, I'd be scratching my head every Wednesday trying to figure out what goes out today, what goes out on Thursday, and I'd probably have it all messed up. So thanks to Graham and Jeff and Jonathan Montgomery for all their work in doing something which seems small to maybe some people, but for a thousand and forty homeowners, it's significant, you know? So I appreciate that. Thanks to the finance office, Robin and Teresa, for all their hard work on the budget. I don't know whether you got an email or not from the baseball coach about the main baseball field. The Virginia head coach was down here to scout out a couple of Pecosin players, and he made the remark to, I guess, the baseball coach, Bennett, that the Pecosin High School field was one of the top-five fields he's ever seen in this state. So to Milt and Rob and all the ones who do the fields, I mean, that's quite, I mean, that's quite a compliment, and that's an older field also, isn't it? It's been around for a while. But it's still, you know, kept up well. Not that I'm for any kind of a tax increase, but I want to let you know that if you own a three-hundred-thousand-dollar house, you're going to pay probably ninety dollars more a year in taxes with a three-cent tax increase. With your car tax going down, it's going to be less than that. Like Tom said, I'm not passing on any increase in health care insurance to the city employees. So we'll see what happens in the work session on budget, and we'll go from there.
Okay, Frank.
And that's it.
All right, thanks, sir. Can't let all those comments go unanswered. You know, I've...
You know, I've been on this council since 1982, which was just yesterday. And I don't know that I've seen a budget that is going to be as difficult as this one is going to be. There are going to be some really tough decisions to make. But I think what the people in this city need to understand, and they need to hear it clearly, and our staff need to hear it clearly, since 1982, there have been very few tax increases in this city, very few. And the one thing that this council and many councils before we were here have been able to do is to keep taxes at a bare minimum, a bare minimum, most of the time not having one at all. And at the same time, be able to take care of our school system. We didn't get the reputation that our school system has today by not doing the right things. Yes, we've had our back and forth about funding, but in the end, in the end, this council has always said, whatever we need to do to make our schools better, we will do that. And we have done that on more than one occasion. The second thing that we've protected since at least 1982 that I can talk about is the staff. The firemen that are here, the police departments represented, like I see some public works, in municipal building type folks, Judy, Vicki, we've been able to protect those folks, and we protect you because, and Jean put it a little more eloquently than I can do it, we protect those positions because that's what we've got going for us. We've got dedicated, loyal staff members, each and every one. And I don't, you know, it doesn't, certainly starts at the top and it works down to the bottom, but there's not a one, not one, that's not carried an extra load at some point in time. There's not one that hasn't pitched in and done someone else's job if they were out sick or on vacation. It's just the way this staff is. And there's no reason for me to believe that this council will not continue to support you and protect you. And in the end, we're going to provide the services that this city needs to have. Again, we've done it since 1982 and many councils before my time, and I've served with a lot of folks. And the one thing I can say, that there are many good points that I could point out about many members of past councils and this council, we've always been united in those positions. We've never torn ourselves apart over staff, over taxes, and over the core services of this city, things that we need to get done. If you go down and look, and if you look at that beautiful school, and you look at that new fire station, and you look at that ball field, and you look at the behind the middle school, that actually, probably a little less than half of that money was donated to the city to put the field down. People are out there that will help us do those kinds of projects. And, you know, Frank brings up a good point. You know, you have a visiting baseball coach. It's because we have not turned away from those needs, and we've concentrated on those needs, and we've passed on to our city managers and their staff what we need to do and how can we be better. And I don't think anybody in the Commonwealth tops this city. I just don't believe that. So, you know, I just do not think personally that we're dealing with a painful budget. Difficult, absolutely. Painful to me, I don't think so. And I will offer those suggestions at the proper time. But as Jean said, Binks covered it well, Tom said it, Kerry said it, Frank said it, Judy believes it. You know, we've worked them out before, and I don't think we're, I don't think this year's any different. I really don't. Okay, other comments, questions? If not, we have a closed session, and if I could get somebody to make that motion and read the paragraph under the closed session, I'd appreciate it.
Mr. Mayor, I move we go to closed session pursuant to section 2.2, Act 3712, the Code of Virginia, 1950, is amended for section A1, A5, A7, as amended to discuss personnel matters, employment of the city manager, to discuss prospective business, and consultation with legal counsel pertaining to actual litigation, i.e. property needs.
All right. Second. Okay, motion made. Second, and we go into our closed session. Vicki, please.
Councillor McQuaufford?
Aye.
Councillor Hunt?
Aye.
Councillor Holloway?
Aye.
Councillor Krieger?
Aye.
Councillor Freeman?
Aye.
Councillor Marie?
Aye.
And Mayor Housley?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by vote is seven to zero.